Okay, good morning, councillors. For the record, Oliver Ojaka, Community Planning Director. This is our 2021 Annual Reviews and Docket that Community Planning Staff and Transportation Public Works Process in 2021. So Jose Alvarez will go over our discussion this morning with the council, and then we all are here to answer questions if you have any. So I'll turn it over to Jose. Thank you.
All right, good morning, councillors. I hope you can hear me. Jose Alvarez with Clark County Community Planning. We're going to go over the 2021 Annual Reviews and Dockets. So the agenda, I'm going to give you a background of the Annual Reviews and Docket process, and then a cumulative analysis, which was a separate report that was provided to the council, and then the Planning Commission Recommendations and the next steps. So the Annual Reviews, under the GMA, the county can accept and adopt a package of changes to its comprehensive plan once a year. We've received five annual re-requests, which are site-specific property owner requests to change Properties Comprehensive Plan and zoning designations. This would allow property owners to use their properties for activities not currently permitted under its existing designations. So these are the five that we received, and we're going to go over them in a little more detail in a few minutes. The dockets are county-initiated processes that are suggested improvements to Comprehensive Plan and Development Codes. There are three items that are on the dockets this year. The Coordinated Water System Plan, 179th Street Access Management Plan, and the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So this is a chart of the Urban Plan Designations to Zone Consistency Chart. Essentially, a Type 4 application is is a process that requires the council approval. So if you're going between, between the boxes from, so the example on the left is the urban low density residential to say commercial, that requires the legislative process, which is the Type 4, and requires, it goes to the Planning Commission, and council ultimately approve it. On the right-hand side, if you're changing just zoning from R15 to R110, that is a Type 3 process and goes through the hearings examiner. So the, there are criteria that staff reviews, and that in evaluating the site-specific requests, staff's required to evaluate whether the proposal meets all of the GMA criteria. The requests have to meet all five of the criteria to receive a staff recommendation of approval that we recommend to the Planning Commission. And there, depending on what the nature of the request is, there may be additional criteria. As you can see here, and some of these that will be coming into play for the items that you will evaluate this year are the additional criteria for surface mining overlay changes, which is the last one, and O. There's the K Comprehensive Plan and Policy or Text Changes, and potentially arterial atlas amendments. The, under G, the criteria for rural map changes is really focused on rural centers and the natural resource designations, which aren't part of the items this year, so that won't come into play. Again, the cumulative analysis is something we're required to assess prior to the council taking action. And there's a, the other report that was provided to council essentially summarizes what those proposed changes are. It summarizes all the proposed requests for a given year, and the net change in acreage if the council was to approve all of the recommendations. This case roughly, there's about 422 acres that were up for proposed changes. 330 of those have to deal with the surface mining overlay. There are 76 acres that would be changed from R20 to R5, and then roughly 12 acres, a net gain of 12 acres in commercial land, and then commensurate decline in urban low of 12 acres. So before we get to the, we're going to get into the Planning Commission Recommendation. But this is kind of an overall schedule. We have eight items total, and we've broken this up into four different council hearings from February 1st through March 15th. When we go through these, I've noticed that I flipped the February 15th and March 1st in that order, so I'll point that out when we get to that. So the first item is going to be the Coordinated Water System Plan. And this is a proposal to amend the Coordinated Water System Plan to reflect a service boundary amendment between the cities of Camas and Vancouver. They had actually entered into an interlocal agreement in October of 2017 to make this change. But the Coordinated Water System Plan doesn't get updated that frequently, so there weren't any other changes that were necessitated in the Coordinated Water System Plan. So this is the sort of only item that's amended, the only amendment that's going to go into that plan. And you'll see that the red line is the new boundary that is actually, the, the property in yellow is going to be served by Camas Water, even though it's within the city limits of Vancouver. It was just more efficient for the city of Camas to provide the water service to those properties. And they, again, entered into that agreement in 2017.
Jose, what are some of the roads or some identifying?
Oh, so I think this is just east of 192nd. You can barely make it out here. So 192nd, like Brady Road. So to the south is SR14, so it's just north of that.
Thank you.
Yep. And again, the Planning Commission is recommending, approve this recommendation six to zero. So these next two items are going to come before you in March, March 1st. So CPZ 2021 00002, Hawes Sims. And the proposal is to change the R20 to R5 on roughly 24.7 acres. The Planning Commission is making recommendation of denial, a four to two vote. There were some issues that, part of the PC discussion revolving around the critical areas. On the property, there's multiple critical areas on the site. There's steep slopes and the proximity to East Fork of the Lewis River. And so the, the discussion was really about adding housing versus building near steep slopes. And then the ownership tenure of the property owners. There's a link to an interactive map on the presentation that will allow you to look at additional layers and those steep slopes. And again, that information will be coming to you March 1st. The, the map will provide you the site terrain, the critical areas, layers, and aerial imagery to look at it in more detail if you'd like. Any questions?
So I have questions. I didn't, I didn't observe, excuse me.
Yep.
The Planning Commission notes or anything. What was the staff's recommendation on this to the Planning Commission?
The staff recommendation was to dial.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question as well.
Go ahead.
I have had some questions along the way, but this is a good place to interject this one. So I see that, and we've talked about this at different times, some kind of solution for individual property owners that were caught in upzoning, where they may have tax parcels but not legally buildable lots. And so I see this as an example of a way forward for a potential property owner to have their property rezoned so that they could have buildable lots. And I guess my question is, how does that process work? Because I have, or I used to have, now that my, my district has changed, I used to have several people who were caught in that, that had no solution. I had brought it to staff to say, how do we fix this issue for them? And I never received any way forward for those constituents. And this I see as a way forward. So how do individual property owners become aware of this possibility? And how do they pursue it? What's the process for individual property owners to seek a zoning change?
So we have a process that we publicize once a year to let property owners know that the time period for accepting pre-applications for Comprehensive Plan Amendments, we usually post that three or four weeks in August, September, and the process runs from October through the end of November for the pre-application conferences. And then the application submittals are due by the end of January.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like they need lawyers to explain that to them. The other related question was a slide previously on the Water System Plan. I'm wondering what kind of coordination is probably your, not your office, maybe it's Public Works, but where the Vancouver and Camas had an interlocutory on a water system change. I'll give an example, Grove Airfield, it's on the, it's in the county, but on the cusp of Camas as well. They have city water available, but no water pressure. And the lack of water pressure prevents any development at the airfield. What kind of process is there for the county, if there is one, and these annexed areas to coordinate it on those fringe areas between the county and city sewer and water?
Jose, if I may, councillor, this is Oliver.
Thank you, Oliver.
The, the issue relating to water and sewer, an area has to be in the urban growth boundary for water and sewer to be provided, except in a case of a health hazard issue, there is a provision in our sewer section that in a case of emergency, sewer can be provided to address that particular issue. The area in question that you're describing, councillor, is not in the urban growth boundary. So by statute and by GMA law, cities cannot extend sewer outside the area that is not inside the urban growth boundary. So that is why that is an issue. Until that area is brought into the urban growth boundary of Camas, then they will have the ability under the law to provide sewer to that area. That would be my answer to you, sir.
Okay, well, we'll talk more on it. That really wasn't what I was asking, but I was talking about water pressure. There's, it's already there. And I was, like the example of Vancouver and Camas working out an agreement. Do we work out agreements? I understand that outs, and it's right on the border of the urban growth boundary. I understand we can't allow, at least now, there's some legislation that's been introduced to change this, but we can't allow sewer to go out into that area. But there's already a water system in place. It just doesn't work to allow economic development in an area of the county. So that was really my specific question, but we can talk about that another time.
Okay, that's, that's, that's true, councillor. And if I may, the, the county can participate in any coordination between the two cities if they choose to, but that will be up to them to do that coordination. And then our role is to review the system, the Coordinated Water System Plan, to make sure, A, that it's consistent with adopted plans. And that's where the county comes in. If it's not consistent with adopted plans, which gets me to the UGA and the decisions that both cities and county makes, that is how the county come into play. But we wouldn't dictate for the city of Camas of Vancouver what area and how and when they amend their boundary. That is up to them to reach that. And then we review the Coordinated Water System Plan and then determine that it is consistent with adopted plan. That is the role under RCW. And I can't remember the exact RCW, but that is how, why I'm answering the question that I'm answering, because if it's not consistent with adopted plan, there is nothing really the county can do.
Okay, let's move on.
Madam Chair, I actually have a question on this slide we have currently, just very quickly. Jose, you'd mentioned that you were going to provide some additional layers and information with regard to the sensitive areas and the East Fork Lewis River, et cetera, with this parcel. Would you send that sooner rather than later? So we have a chance to, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, it, it should already be in the PowerPoint. You can just click on this link.
Oh, on this, okay, okay, okay. Well, I'm actually going to do that now, but, okay, perfect, thank you. And then I, it would be my understanding then that the reason staff recommended to dial on this is because of those steep slopes and sensitive areas, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
One other thing about this item and the next. I think there's, I think additional information that came in. And so we will share that with council in their meeting materials, where there's additional submittals from the applicant, and they will have an opportunity to present their side of this at the hearing. So the next item is CPZ 2021 0004 to Freeze. This is similar, where there's a request to go from R20 to R5. This also had some issues with environmental constraints, primarily the floodplain and the proximity to the East Fork of the Lewis River. Again, the addition of housing versus building near the floodplain was one of the things that the Planning Commission had discussion on. The property owner here has a long tenure in the property and the area. And this is two parcels, again, that are just about 52 acres. The Planning Commission made a motion to deny, and that ended up in a three to three tie. So this is coming to you with no recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, Jose, can I ask just a question with regard to this one and the prior one? Let's assume that the council approves both of these. They still have to go through all the other processes in terms of building. So if the site isn't compatible for building, would it, it wouldn't be allowed? Would it even though it's a five-acre parcel?
So there, I think there are options that would allow for building. So there's a cluster provision that would allow you to not build in the five acres, and so you could do more in designing the development to maybe avoid that. We do have in our, in our Critical Areas Ordinance, if the zoning is changed, they, we're obligated to recognize the full density on the site. So if there were, if this were to change to five acres, we're obligated to get the 10 lots, even if it requires some encroachment in environmental areas, my understanding from the conversations I've had with Brent Davis.
Okay, can we flesh that out a little bit before our hearing?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the hairjon is, these next two items are the ones that are going to come before you on February 15th. This is a proposed change from neighborhood commercial to urban low-density residential R16 on roughly two acres. This is the, along, the frontage of this property is along Northeast 99th Street. To the east is SR503, and to the west is Northeast 94th Avenue. The IL here is the Lake, Lake near landfill. So the, one of the large overriding issues here is the, the, the road project for Northeast 99th Street, that's going to be going to construction this year, where they're going to do an improvement from SR503 to roughly 94th Avenue, maybe a little further to the west. And so the, the idea would seem like it was premature to make this change until the road got built, to see if it would have any impact on the viability of the commercial. This is a, it's a small neighborhood commercial, and it's been designated as neighborhood commercial since 1994. And the Planning Commission made the recommendation to deny six to zero. The next item is CPZ 2021 00005, New Heights. This is the church property just south of the Padden along Northeast 78th Street. To the right, to the east is Andreessen, is the major intersection there. This is, there's an existing church on the site. The church has purchased some of the surrounding residential properties. I think there's two properties along Northeast 78th, and the, the two properties on the west side, a budding Northeast 78th there. And their interest is providing medical and dental clinics. And the current R17, the residential zoning won't allow that, even with a conditional use. So that was the impetus for the, the change. It's roughly 12 parcels and 14 acres that would be affected by this. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Any questions on that? Okay. So the next item is CPZ 2021 00006, and this is the Chalachy Bluff Surface Mining Overlay Request. There's roughly 330 acres that are enforced here to FR40 zoning. And the applicants want to propose a surface mining overlay on four of the parcels that are outlined in red. They currently own the parcel just to the north that has the surface mining overlay on it. There was a appeal on the SEPA, the determination of nonsignificance. And so you will have this, an additional staff report from us addressing that appeal, and it's required to have a hearing before the Chalachy Bluff hearing. So we'll schedule that on the same day, which will be the, the March 15th. And the Planning Commission recommended approval five to zero.
Madam Chair, can I just ask Jose to show me where the, the rail line is with his cursor?
It's roughly in here.
Thank you. I suspected that was it, but it wasn't.
It parallels, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So the next item is the CPZ 2021 00013, the 179th Street Access Management Plan. This item has yet to go to the Planning Commission. There's a hearing scheduled for February 17th. Generally, there's going to be a, the proposal is to develop a circulation and access management plan for that 179th Street corridor, and ultimately could include additions of neighborhood circulate, neighborhood circulator, collector, and commercial industrial classified streets, some realignments of the planned streets and removal of future streets, the arterial atlas. Matt Herman is here, if you have any specific questions about the, this project. So the next item is CPZ 2021 00014. This is the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. We're required to update the pros plan every six years. The last pros plan was adopted in 2015. So Parks has provided an update of, of the plan. Some of the concepts that were included in this are looking at the operations and maintenance capacity considerations and capital development, looking at the park impact fee program, review to meet residential needs, and more systematic approach to assess operation and recreation needs. And I believe Rocky is available from Parks if you have any specific questions about this. The PC did approve this six to zero.
Madam Chair, one of the things I know that we talked about, and Rocky, maybe you can answer this or not, is trails and PIF credits for trails and trails taking the place of some of these, some of these park obligations in new development. What, is this addressed in the, in the updated plan?
Councillor Olsen, Rock Houston for the record. Yes, in the recommendations, there is, we've got a lot of feedback for PIF credits. We have to go through that process, which would follow the adoption of the pros plan, as well as trail standard to allow trails to be used with PIF funds as well. So those two items are in the, the action items.
Okay, and then if you wouldn't mind, could you send that out? Could you send the, the pros information out to all the councillors? But specifically, I'd like to kind of get a good look at the details that we're, we're talking about here.
Of course, no problem.
Thank, thank you.
So the next steps, we're having the council work session today. Council hearings starting February 1st, going through March 15th, and then coming back with adapting Resolution Ordinance on April 5th for consent, and then effective date of the ordinance on April 15th. And then an effective date of the ordinance on April 15th. Concludes the presentation. Have any, have any questions, comments?
Other questions or comments with the council?
I have a brief comment about policy issue regarding some of the zoning that we saw and, and related to those partials that are constrained by critical areas and are asking to have their zoning changed so they could get some value out of their property. You know, all, it brings, the overarching issue is this, you know, we want to protect our critical areas and, and some of those laws change, you know, buffers change over time. So if you have a longstanding owner, they may have had circumstances change and constrain their property as state law changes in that regard. So when you have somewhat of, I don't want to use the word artificial, but there are constraints on property that the government puts in place for the benefit of the community, the watershed in this case. There should be some way then to ameliorate that for the property owner. And whether that comes through conservation where they receive their lost value of the property because of those changing laws. Something needs to be considered legislatively locally so that property owners do get the value out of their property, yet balancing that against needing to protect the resources that may be flowing through their property. So it's just something, you know, we don't have staff individually for us. I mean, that's what I, if I had a staff on our legislative body, I would say, let's figure this out. What changes, if any, do we need to give rural property owners some of the benefits back to their property ownership? So anyway, I just throw that out there because it struck me as we were going through those different examples of changes that were proposed or requested.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns, whatever, comments?
Councillor, this is Oliver again. Sometimes when we are looking at the plan update, which is the periodic update, the council will have to direct staff on what are the issues you want staff to engage in. Other than that, the only other options that the county has is through the provision that property owners make requests on an annual basis to update, to amend the, make a request to amend the comprehensive plan designation of their property. Other mechanism includes a legal law determination if there's an, an issue of whether the parcel is legally, was legally created at the time it was created or not. That's another mechanism to look at the viability of that property being developed if it is legally, even if it doesn't meet the minimum parcel size of the current zoning. So those are some of the areas or the techniques that, or the steps or what is available to property owners. And we have our legal counsel available here in case if she wants to chime in. But if there is no direction from council during the periodic review, A, to look at the zoning and consider reasoning them, I don't know. That would be the directive from the council and then we will, we will engage in that effort. But other than that, it is the provision that the plan is not cast in stone. There should be a procedure and guidelines whereby the property owners can follow to amend the comp plan and the zoning, which is the annual review and the docket process. The docket process, as you know, is at no cost to the property owner. We come to the council and ask, do you, do you, the council, direct staff to process any of the application at no cost to the applicant? And that's what we have been doing to date. Don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you for all that, Oliver. I did bring to your attention the Eck property about three years ago. You might take a look at that once again.
Okay, sir. I will take a look at it if you can refresh my memory on that. And I will follow through with staff and review that. I, I, I believe the, the, the inquiry that you made, we did get back to you outlining what we were able to find. And I engaged my staff in that review. And I believe we provided a response back that here's our findings and here's what county record shows on that particular, a particular property owner. If, if what I'm recalling is the EBITs. If it's the EBITs, I know we provided you a response on that particular property owner.
Yeah, so let's do that offline and I'm just asking to revisit it once again. Obviously it was never resolved.
Okay, sir.
Okay, other, other questions or comments? If not, I guess that concludes this work session. And I believe now we go to council time. Is that correct, Kathleen?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Would you like a five minute break? Or is 37 minutes not enough time to require a break? Let me know. Well, we'll just move into council time. Thank you, Oliver and, and Jose for that presentation.
You're welcome, councillor.
Okay.